Okay, at this time, I'd like to call to order the Tuxbury Finance Committee Public Hearing for April ten, twenty twenty-three. Stand for the pledge, okay, anybody, all that can, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, this is the meeting we have for anyone from the general public to ask any questions they might have regarding the warrant articles for the annual town meeting and the special town meetings that will be held on May first and May third. The Finance Committee has already reviewed the warrant articles with the town manager. The committee may or may not have any questions for town manager at this time. Tonight is more for anyone from the Tuxbury community to ask any questions they may have regarding any of the warrant articles. So, the way this will work, we'll address each warrant article individually. Any residents that would like to speak about the article we are reviewing will come to the microphone and state their name and address for the record. After resident questions are addressed, I will open it up for committee, to the committee for questions. After discussion is completed, the Finance Committee will vote on our recommendation as to how to proceed on this article, on the article at hand. I will now look for a motion to waive the reading of the warrant article.
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, unanimous. Okay, so, annual town meeting, warrant articles. Article one is about the elections, so we don't need to take any action on that, so we'll skip to article two. Mister Town Manager.
You truly, you are.
Okay. I don't think so.
Sorry.
Also.
Also.
Article two is for the FY twenty-four salaries of elected officials. The salaries that are listed in the warrant article reflect the increases that were approved at the special town meeting in October. The elected officials include Board of Health, Moderator, Planning Board, School Committee, and Select.
Excellent. Is there anybody from the community that would like to talk? Seeing nobody, anybody from the committee have any questions? Otherwise, I look for a motion on this, on a recommendation.
Motion to adopt Article two, Mister Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, or unanimous, four zero.
Article three is the consent calendar, which if approved, would approve four articles. One, to accept the annual reports, the annual report should be online over the next week. It's just, it's just sent to the printer and being finalized. There'll be an article for leases and purchases, which allows the town manager to lease, enter into lease purchase agreements. Authorizes, there was another article authorizing expenditure of chapter ninety funds for roadway drainage and sidewalk improvements. And then the reauthorization of all of the previously authorized water funds in your expenditure cap. As approved by a previous town.
Okay, any questions from any residents? Open it up to the committee, any questions on the Article three subsections? Look for a motion on Article three.
I motion to adopt Article three, Article three dash thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four.
Second motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, unanimous.
Article four. Article four is the warrant budget. That includes all of the town departments. FY twenty-four recommended budgets. Total budget for the town and school and unclassified budgets. Is a hundred and thirty-four million, one hundred five thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars. It's an increase over FY twenty-three in the amount of four million, eight hundred sixty thousand, two hundred thirty-seven dollars. Town budget, net its allocations, will increase two million, fifty-six thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars. In schools, net its allocations will increase two million, four hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars. Shashin tech budget will increase six hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars. We will see a decrease in Essex North Shore Agricultural Technical School in the amount of forty-six thousand, six dollars. Just briefly, going over the highlights of the budget, the town budget. Within its increase, salaries prior to any allocations increased two hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars. And that was mainly due to a cost of living increase of two point two five percent. And any other contractual obligations that departments had within their budget for their employees. The budget, salary budget for the town does not include any new positions. It does fill any vacancies due to retirements or employees leaving, but there are no new, no new positions within the townside budget. The operating budget prior to allocations, that increased four hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred and eight dollars. Some of the highlights of that increase. Were spread throughout the entire, entire budget. The library budget, operating budget increased twenty-seven thousand, ninety dollars. The COVID areas such as utility increases, books, subscription increase. Increases to technology and just general, general repairs and maintenance to the library. The general government budgets increased fifteen thousand, six hundred eleven dollars. Areas such as the town audit increased six thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars. Town manager professional services increased forty-four thousand, seventy-four dollars. Because we consolidated the amount, the permitting software for the town within the town manager's budget and removed it from other budgets. I did decrease town council operating budget for FY twenty-four based on historical spending. And we saw an increase in professional services for human resources in the amount of six thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. For the cost of employee backgrounds, background checks and medical exams. The, just a couple of other areas, public safety operating increased forty-one thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars. Of that, the police increased twelve thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars. And fire department operating increased twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighteen dollars. In both departments, the increase was spread throughout many line items, from repairs and maintenance to utilities to communication costs. DPW overall, their operating budget decreased sixty-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars. Big chunk of that was from engineering, sidewalks was removed from the budget. It'll no longer be within the operating budget, but will be placed in the capital budget. And will seek appropriation separate from the operating budget each year instead of placing it in the budget. In addition, the DPW had increases to different line items throughout their budget. Again, supplies and maintenance, repairs and maintenance, line items had increases. Mainly because the cost of supplies has gone up. The big area of increase for the DPW was in fleet operating. That increased a hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars for maintenance. Maintenance and equipment of their vehicles, police vehicles. And also included gas and diesel costs for the town, which has increased, as we all know, over the past year. That increase alone was a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. The other big areas of increase on the town's operating side, solid waste collection and disposal had an overall increase of five hundred eighty thousand, four hundred forty-seven dollars. The town's contract with Republic Services was extended five years. The new extension begins July one, twenty twenty-three. The extension includes residential refuse collection, bulk item collection, recycling collection, yard waste collection, and, and, and public building, solid waste collection. The increase really is because the industry is seeing a major increase in all of the municipal areas. Other communities that are either extending their contracts or going up to bid are seeing similar, if not higher, increases than we are. And it's mostly driven because of employee staffing costs, insurance, fuel, and just the uncertainty of the market that they live in. For instance, this past contract, the five-year contract that we had with Republic, our recycling collection, just not, no service cost was capped at sixty dollars a ton. They would take it to a recycling center, they would process the recycling. And because recycling is not profitable anymore, where it's not, you can't sell, sell to other markets, they have, there was a cost to process it. That cost reach is up to about a hundred and thirty dollars per ton. We, in our last contract, when we negotiated, capped it at sixty dollars a ton. So for every ton of recycling they processed, they were losing money on us. What's interesting is the cost to process recycling is a hundred and thirty dollars a ton. The cost to take our solid waste to Covanta, where we dispose of our solid waste, will be ninety-seven dollars a ton. So you can see the change in the market conditions that they face, so. Our dollar increase was less than what we have seen or heard from other communities. But that was a major impact to our, to our budget in FY twenty-four. Our disposal contract, where with Covanta, where we currently dispose of our solid waste, actually decreased a hundred and five thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars. And that's not because the per tonnage cost, per ton cost went down. That went from ninety-three sixty to ninety-seven thirty-four. But as part of the new contract with Republic, they are not going to charge us for the disposal of our public building containers. So we were able to reduce that from the Covanta side of the budget. The other big area that we saw an increase in the townside budget was health insurance. That increased three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eighty dollars, that was a five percent increase to our health premiums. The other big increase was property and liability insurance. We budgeted, we had a budget increase of ten percent over the last year's premium. That was fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And then finally, the biggest increase that we saw in the budget this year was the Middlesex retirement increase. That had a twelve point four four percent foot, twelve point, twelve point four four percent increase. And that equated to one million, two thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. And that was based on evaluation in Middlesex Retirement did, after evaluation they did in two thousand twenty-two. And that increased our assessment for FY twenty-four. On the school side, and then finally, the increase, other than operating, there was an increase in capital outlay budgets totaling thirty-one thousand, one hundred thirty-seven dollars. Mainly for the increased cost of police cruisers and transferring of police equipment, such as lights, cages, guns, from one vehicle to another. Town enterprise allocations, which offset our budgets and reduce the amount we have to appropriate. That increased a hundred and forty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars. Water allocations increased a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. Sewer allocations increased sixteen thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. Cable increased fifteen hundred, fifty-two dollars. And again, those allocations act as a revenue to reduce the amount we have to appropriate for the total budget. Just quickly, on the school side, their operating budget increased two million, four hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars. Of that, salaries increased one million, one hundred nineteen, seven hundred and eighty dollars. That was mainly for cost of living increase, longevity increase, step increases and other contractual obligations. Their, their cost of living increase was similar to the town of two point two five percent. Their operating budget increased eight hundred twenty-five thousand, ninety-six dollars. Their adjustment of that increase was for major, for general building and maintenance costs. And the biggest part of that was for an increased cost to transportation, which was three hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars. And an increase of five hundred, one thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars for our district tuition. So those are the big increases on the school side, operating. Their fixed costs went up three hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Again, similar to the town, health insurance went up four hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Because of premium increases and enrollment increases. Their retirement assessment also went up higher than normal this year, eight point two percent for a cost of a hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. They saw a reduction in their Medicare tax based on historic spending. And unemployment decreased a hundred thousand dollars based on claims and historic expenditures. In addition to the school and town budget, Shashin assessment, as I mentioned, went up six hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars. That's mainly driven by cost of living increases and contractual obligations for their staff, building repairs and maintenance that are higher than normal this year. Health insurance, school transportation, and general cost of supplies for their various trade programs. And those are the major increases to the budget.
Alright, thank you. Do we have anybody that has any questions from the resident? No, any questions from the committee? And just so everybody knows that might be watching on TV, we've been reviewing this, but, these budgets for the last few months, so. Unless there's any other questions we might have at this time, no. Okay, look for a motion?
I'll motion to adopt Article five.
Uh, four.
A four, excuse me.
Thank you.
Second motion.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, that's unanimous. Alright, Article five.
Article five is the sewer enterprise budget, seeking to raise seven million, one hundred nine thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars to operate the sewer enterprise fund. The increase in the sewer enterprise fund had an overall increase of two hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Salaries increased forty thousand, fifty-two dollars, which was basically, which entailed the cost of living increase of two point two five percent, any, and any contractual obligations. Then the sewer enterprise fund, a major portion of that was a twenty-seven thousand, three hundred dollar increase to terminal leave, which is simply a buyback for retiring employee. The operating budget increased twenty thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars. Main increases in the operating budget utilities increased twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. That's essentially to supply gas to nine generators and electricity to forty-seven pump stations. The increase was based on historic projected usage. We had an increase in Lowell Sewer of three hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Which was based on the allocable costs that we, that we have, based on usage at the Lowell wastewater treatment plant. And those are essentially the major changes to the sewer enterprise fund. We are gonna see an increase in the sewer rates for next year. Now, the average sewer bill should increase twenty-two dollars and fifty-two cents per year. That's based on the average usage of fifty-five thousand gallons per year, which comes out to a three percent increase sewer rates. We're gonna be using eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars from retained earnings to help offsets, offset sewer debt to minimize the impact of the rate increase.
Okay, are there any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee on Article five? Do we have any motions?
Motion to adopt Article five.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, unanimous.
Article six. Article six is the Water Enterprise Fund article, seeking to appropriate through water rates, eight million, one hundred eighty-two dollars and eight, eight million, one hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars to operate Water, Water Enterprise Fund. Water Enterprise Fund includes the water distribution and water treatment plant budgets. The overall increase to both is seven hundred, ten thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars. Salaries increased, increases includes the two hundred and forty percent increase to, for employees, any contractual benefits. And again, a terminal leave, which increased forty thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. And that's due again to an employee retiring, that employee shared between Martin Sewer, that's a long time employee. The overall increase to the operating expense, expenses was three hundred and fifteen thousand, eighty-seven dollars. Of that, fourteen thousand dollars was for water distribution operating and three hundred and one thousand, five dollars was for water treatment plant operating costs. The main drivers in the overall water enterprise operating expenses were energy and utilities. Especially in the water treatment plant, that increased ninety thousand dollars. Leases and contracts for contractual services for lab testing increased thirty-six thousand dollars for the water treatment plant. And the biggest increase in all of the budgets in the water enterprise was chemicals. The cost of chemicals has increased, and that amount is a hundred and ninety-five thousand, seventy-four dollars. In the FY twenty-four enterprise budget. There was no change in capital outlay, debt service increased ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars, which is associated to water distribution projects. allocations, as I mentioned, increased a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. And this equates to an approximate increase to the, to water bills, to the average water bill of fifty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents per year. The average usage being fifty-five thousand gallons per year, which equates about eleven point, eleven and a half percent increase.
So was it a percentage increase?
Eleven and a half.
Eleven and a half.
The big driver of the water enterprise budgets this year and going forward with the amount of water distribution projects we want to do. The plan is to do three and a half miles a year, which is an aggressive schedule. But it's something we believe we need to do based on the age of the system.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from residents? Seeing none, any from the committee on Article six?
Motion to adopt Article six, Mister Chairman.
Motion?
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, or unanimous? Article seven.
Article seven, we have a six hundred, eleven thousand, two hundred dollars to operate the stormwater enterprise fund. This is through stormwater fees for both residential and commercial. Stormwater budget continues to address the stormwater compliance and maintenance and repairs of the stormwater system. There are no salaries within this enterprise fund, only operating costs and capital costs. The, the actual operating cost for the enterprise fund decreased seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. There were some areas within the budget that increased. But there were minor increases and adjustments throughout the entire budget, but the overall budget decreased seven hundred, seven thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Further along, we'll talk about the capital projects that we plan to do using stormwater enterprise fees.
Okay.
And there's no change in the fee at seventy-five dollars per residential equivalent unit.
Alright, any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee? I have one question. The seventy-five dollar fee, you know, that's covering what we need to accomplish with this.
Yeah.
To stay in compliance.
It's keeping us in compliance, it's allowing us to undertake a major project per year and design the next project. As well as some other minor maintenance projects. The revenue doesn't generate as much retained earnings as say water and sewer do, because that's driven by usage. Because this is a flat fee, we really don't take in, we, basically, it just make a little over the, off the revenue projection. We've had the enterprise in place for two years and the retained earnings, I believe, is, just don't check it, it's not, it's not that high compared to water and sewer. It's maybe a hundred. Two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, when you compare that to water retained earnings was a million five, and sewer retained earnings, six point one.
Okay. Any other questions on Article seven? Any motions?
Motion to adopt Article seven.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, unanimous. Article eight.
Article eight is the Cable Enterprise Fund. This is the fund that allows us to operate the telemedia department. That does all of the local programming. The telemedia enterprise fund is seeking to raise four hundred and six thousand, thirty-eight dollars to operate Cable TV Enterprise Fund. This is basically funding from the Comcast franchise fee, which is three percent of gross revenue. And the Verizon franchise fee, which is five percent of gross revenue. Those fees, we, when we talk about this, what I, makes it sound like it's not costing the taxpayer or anything, but it's a pass-through cost that's on your cable bill. So it is costing residents to, to fund this. So I don't want anybody to think that this is free money from the cable companies. It is a pass-through.
Great.
The Cable TV Enterprise Fund includes salaries and operating capital. Salaries increase for telemedia department thirteen thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars, covering cost of living increases and contractual obligations, as well as an increase in part-time salaries for part-time help. The operating budgets, which is, which addresses equipment maintenance and operations and programming and broadcasting needs, increased on eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Under capital budget, that actually reduced this year by a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Because we're doing a smaller project, capital project within capital outlay this year compared to last year. This year, we're seeking thirty thousand dollars to fund a media or asset management system, which would allow to have the telemedia department to edit and store material remotely without relying on an external hard drive. Article further along in the warrant, they will be seeking two hundred thousand dollars from cable retained earnings to upgrade the high school studio.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee?
I have a question. Um, and I know it's probably been answered since January, since we started with these. When does the Comcast contract need to be renegotiated, and same question on Verizon?
Comcast, we actually got started negotiating over the next few months. It expires in twenty twenty-five. You need to start negotiating sometime. Well, three years out, we kind of, we'd like to stop that. So we're gonna be getting, we'll be getting that process, actually, the select one on May sixteenth. We'll have a hearing to receive any input and comments on the Comcast cable. Verizon, we just negotiated a new contract a couple of years ago, and we'll be starting that process back up also, they only did a five-year contract. Just of note, the Comcast franchise fee, capital fee that we collected in FY twenty-two was two hundred twenty-two thousand, nineteen dollars, and the Verizon fee was three hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars. And that's mainly driven because of the percentage that we charge Comcast compared to Verizon.
Wasn't there talk of reducing the Verizon one?
There was until they, well, they went with a five-year contract. So, we, we actually offered to reduce the fee if they would extend the term of the contract. So we, we actually offered to reduce the fee if they would extend the term of the contract. They didn't want to do that. Then there's some other provisions and they don't provide as much capital as Comcast does. So they chose, that's how they chose to do it.
Okay. Rich, any other questions?
No.
No. Anybody else?
No.
For a motion on Article eight?
Eight, motion to adopt Article eight.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous. Article nine.
Article nine transfers, seeking to transfer one million, nine hundred, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and five dollars from the Town Stabilization Fund for following projects that are listed in the article that I'll go over. Just to note, the stabilization fund currently has fourteen million, thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars. All of these listed in the, listed in the handout for town meeting. If this article is approved, we'll have a balance of twelve million, one hundred eighty thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars. The items that we're proposing to fund in this article. First, first set for the TPW. One is a rubber wheeled excavator with brush cutter, a hundred eighty thousand dollars. The brush cutter will be able to perform various tasks for the highway forestry, water and sewer divisions. It's used to excavate for drainage improvements, water main repairs. And we'll have a brush cutting attachment used to cut back roadside vegetation to improve safety on roadways. The equipment will be used in place of the existing pack hoes, which will, which while they perform sufficiently, lack the capabilities for efficient roadside work. The new excavator will also be helpful in managing compost operation at the TPW yard, allowing them to turn the compost piles much easier than they do now. The total cost of this vehicle is four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But the cost is being shared between water and sewer enterprise funds, since they will be also using the vehicle to perform tasks within their enterprise. Next item is to purchase two variable message boards. The amount from the stabilization fund is twenty-two thousand dollars. This is to purchase two electronic message boards to replace the ones that we have that are nearly twenty years old. And they've leased, they've reached their end of life cycle. They don't perform properly and they are not readily available to, to get fixed. And their software is outdated. The total cost for the, for both message boards is forty-four thousand dollars. The general fund, the stabilization fund, fund twenty-two thousand dollars. And the remaining will be split between the sewer enterprise funds, since we use it for all three operations. Next is an asphalt curb machine. Stabilization fund is seeking to transfer eight thousand dollars. The DPW is requesting to purchase this machine. The DPW has an old concrete curb machine, which does not work as efficiently as an asphalt curb machine. This will allow us to fix asphalt curbing in town as well as burms in the community when they're needed. The new machine will produce a stronger and longer lasting product. The total cost is sixteen thousand dollars and will be shared with the water and sewer department. Brush bander chipper, a hundred thousand dollars being requested from the stabilization fund. We're looking to replace the existing wood chipper, which has been a service since nineteen ninety-six. It's a crucial part of the operations for the forest, forestry division when they remove trees, especially during storms throughout the year. The next item is to replace the engineering division vehicle, forty-four, forty-five thousand dollars. This is to replace the engineering division's two thousand and six Ford Expedition, which was passed down to them by the police department. The next item is to replace an F three fifty plow package, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This is again to replace a two thousand and six F three fifty pickup utility truck. We utilize these vehicles on a daily basis to perform various tasks, including snow removal. So a new vehicle is needed at this time. It's part of our ongoing replacement program. And then finally, twenty-four, for the DPW, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty thou, forty dollars is being requested by the DPW to purchase vehicle diagnostic software, diagnostic software for the fleet maintenance department to troubleshoot problems in newer vehicles that they service. Under the fire department, there are two requests. One is for a new ambulance and equipment, four hundred and ten thousand dollars to replace one of the department's high mileage ambulances that is reaching the end of its service life. The new ambulance will have a heavy duty chassis, which will have a longer service life for the department. In addition, the department is looking for a new fire engine and equipment for the engine in the amount of eight hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. This funding will replace the fire department's two thousand and eight Pass Velocity Engine, which is close to twenty years old and has, has had increasing maintenance and repair costs. The lead time for new vehicle is twenty-four, thirty months. So we'd like to get that ordered as soon as we can. Plus, what we're hearing, the cost of vehicles will be going up over the next few months due to energy efficient, energy efficiency requirements, so we'd like to get that sorted as soon as we can. Police Department also has facilities, is seeking a hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars from stabilization fund. Improvements to the police, police station. They're looking to install new cameras for prisoner cells in the amount of twenty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. The new cameras replace the out of date analog cameras that are currently in the department. We also need to replace the elevator in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The current elevator is twenty-six years old. We have difficulty finding parts to repair the elevator when it needs maintenance. Then finally, we're looking to replace the roll call room flooring, five thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Police currently or recently has updated the entire roll call room with the exception of the flooring. This will be the last phase for them. And that's the transfer from stabilization.
All right. Do we have any questions from residents? Seeing none. Any questions from the committee?
Just one clarifying question.
Sure.
The items listed in the executive summary are the only ones that are dependent on the following two articles, right?
Right.
Okay. That was almost the chairman.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
Do we have any motions?
I'll motion to adopt Article nine.
A second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous.
Article ten is transferring funds, a four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from sewer retained earnings for the following projects. As I mentioned, sewer will have a cost share for the rubber wheeled excavator. Their cost share is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Their cost share for the two variable message boards, eleven thousand dollars. And for the asphalt curving machine, four thousand dollars. In addition, the sewer enterprise fund is seeking to purchase retained earnings. F five fifty flat bed patch truck, fifty-five thousand dollars, which still costs share with water department. This vehicle will replace a two thousand F, Ford F five fifty, which has been used to haul asphalt, coal, jack, coal patch to make temporary pairs to park those water main trenches. The life cycle of that vehicle has actually outlived its life cycle. And now we're recommending replacement of the vehicle. Also under the sewer enterprise fund, we're looking for fifty thousand dollars for inflow infiltration control. This project is an ongoing annual request to rehabilitate sewer manholes, pipe segments and service connections that have found to be sources of inflow and infiltration to our sewer system. The more inflow and infiltration we have to the system flows to the wastewater treatment plant, which ends up costing us money because of our allocation of the flow at the treatment plant. So the more we tighten up our system, the better we are. And this is one of those areas, this is an area that we do that. We're also seeking two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for pump station improvements. The DPW performed an assessment of thirty of the forty-eight pump stations, did we have forty-eight or forty-seven? We found the answer right in front of us. Forty-eight pump stations and the assessment identified and recommended improvements to those. And the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will, will be the start of making improvements to those pump stations over a five-year period. That's it for sewer.
All right, thank you. Any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee?
Motion to adopt Article ten, Mr. Chairman.
Motion?
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous. Article eleven.
Article eleven is transfer from water retained earnings. Putting the amount of three hundred twenty thousand dollars to fund following capital items. This article funds the share of the water department's cost of the rubber wheeled excavator at a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, the two message boards at eleven thousand dollars and the asphalt curving machine at four thousand dollars. Also has the water department's share of the F five fifty flat bed patch truck at fifty-five thousand dollars. And also seeks funding of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for hydro replacement, which will replace twenty-five hydrants over the next year as part of an ongoing program to replace hydrants in town.
Okay. Any questions from residents? Seeing none, any from the committee? Any motions?
I'll motion to adopt Article eleven.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous. Article twelve.
Article twelve raises five hundred and five thousand dollars for stormwater fees to undertake capital improvements to the stormwater system. Five hundred thousand dollars will be used for the replacement of the Pringle Street, for the culvert on Pringle Street and other improvements to the drainage system in the Woburn Street neighborhood. Fifty-five thousand dollars will be used to design improvements to the PMBR in the neighborhood. And again, this is coming from the fees that we generate for those sewer, stormwater enterprises.
Okay, any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee? I have one question, the, this is coming out of the Stormwater and you said the retained earnings on that was what, a couple hundred thousand?
No, it's gonna come from raising appropriate fees.
Okay, gotcha.
We, we want to build up the retained earnings before we start using any of it.
Yeah. I was gonna say, it's not that high, yeah.
We're so early in the use of that enterprise, I'm gonna wait.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Motion?
Motion to adopt Article twelve.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous. Article thirteen.
As I mentioned before, the Water Enterprise Fund is becoming more aggressive in addressing water distribution improvements. We're seeking to borrow two point one million dollars to, to undertake water addition, distribution system improvements per the five-year capital plan. allocation for the upgrades, using the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we went on to Article fourteen, right?
Sorry. Thirteen.
Skip to the, skip to the, I know. Turn the microphone, I know.
Article thirteen is to transfer two hundred thousand dollars from Cable Enterprise retained earnings to fund the upgrades to the cable, to the studio at the high school. This will improve the studio camera switches, lighting and audio equipment. Much of the equipment in the production studio is obsolete and past its useful life. By upgrading the studio, allow the students to learn using state-of-the-art video equipment. Will improve the telemedia's broadcasting capabilities.
All right, thank you. Any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee? Any motions?
Motion to adopt Article thirteen.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous.
All right, now we're gonna walk.
There we go.
So as I mentioned, this is part of the water distribution system upgrade improvements that we have, and improvements that we've talked about in the five-year plan. The two point one million dollars will be borrowed sometime in the late summer. And the funding will go towards upgrades that will include the Victor Drive and Beet Street neighborhoods. And it will also allow for engineering of pipe replacement for the third phase of water main replacement itself, Tuckberry F five twenty-five.
Okay. Any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee?
Just one, because there is an official motion in there specifically worded, is this a different than a majority vote? Is it a two-thirds vote?
It's a two-thirds.
Okay. That's all Mr. Chairman.
Stabilization, I believe, is a two-thirds vote? Is it changed to a majority?
Any other questions on Article fourteen? Any motions?
I'll motion to adopt Article fourteen.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous. Article fifteen.
Article fifteen uses a bond premium from two thousand and sixteen that was generated through bond refinancing. The bond premium must be used over a period of time to reduce excluded debt that we have in town. So the forty thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars will be used to reduce the existing town exempt debt principal.
Okay. Any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee? Any motions?
I'll motion to adopt Article fifteen.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous. Article sixteen.
Article sixteen seeks to transfer a four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars from CPA undesignated reserve to install new lights, poles and associated electric work at Obden's Field at Saunders Recreation Complex. The plan is to install new updated safe lighting with new high efficiency LED appliances. This is by the older youth baseball teams that play on Obden, Obden's and Antonelli. And I know that because of the number players that participate and the number of teams they have, it's always tough scheduling, so this will allow for better scheduling of more games.
Okay, any questions from residents? Seeing none, any from the committee? I do have one, do we have any other fields that are still looking for lights or?
No, this should be the, this should be the last, I think the next we'll discuss is anything for high school.
Okay.
But there might be funding from the high school project to, to do that.
Okay.
We actually, because this has been talked about before, being mobile from our facilities is, is gonna get pricing on the lights up there just so we have.
Great. All right, thank you. Any motions on Article sixteen?
A motion to adopt Article sixteen, Mr. Chairman.
I will second.
A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous. Article seventeen.
Article seventeen is transferring thirty thousand dollars from CPA undesignated to purchase and install home side bleachers at the football field at Saunders Recreation Complex. I will also pay for the, if any, needed removal of old bleachers and demolition of any concrete pads. Last year, we replaced the visitor's side bleachers, replaced the home side.
All right. Any questions from residents? Seeing none, any from the committee? For motion?
To adopt Article seventeen.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous. Article eighteen.
Article eighteen seeks eighty thousand dollars from CPA undesignated to identify and design and test for locations of hazardous materials at the Ella Fleming School. We've had a cost estimate, we had a cost estimate done a couple of years ago on what it would cost to remove hazardous materials at the school. A few years back, it was approximately fifty-seven thousand dollars. We increased it based on the number of years that have passed. Once we identify exactly where the hazardous material is and how to remove it, we'll have professional. and how to remove it, we'll have a professional contractor, a certified contractor, remove and remediate the material. That will allow us to begin a serious look at what the reuse of the school will be.
Okay. Any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee? Any motions?
I'll motion to adopt Article eighteen.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. You announce. Article nineteen.
Article nineteen seeks to transfer ninety-two thousand seven-hundred-and-forty-one dollars from CPA undesignated reserve to to address water quality issues at Long Pond. For those of you who might remember, in the summer of twenty-two, there was a public health emergency declared in Long Pond due to an algae boom. And after some testing, they confirmed what the issues were at the pond. What we, we have brought in a consultant to review what type of treatment should be undertaken, multi-year treatment at the pond that should be undertaken to improve the water quality. And the ninety-two thousand seven-hundred-and-forty-one dollars will be used for that multi-year treatment over a five-year period.
Okay. Any questions from residents? Seeing none, any from the committee?
Uh, just one, that, uh, I think, Mr. Town Manager, this is not to make it a swimmable pond, right? Right. Thank you.
And is that, what is it, ninety-two some odd, is that for the five years, or is that?
That's for the five years.
That's for the five years, okay. So not.
We have some funding left from a previous appropriation, so we're gonna use that plus some of this money for the first year. And cast it for years after that, too.
Okay. Any other questions? For motion?
Motion to adopt Article nineteen.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, or you announce. Article twenty.
Article twenty is the standard article we have each year on the town, uh, annual town meeting warrant for the housing trust fund allocation plan. That was approved by town meeting.
Okay, any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee? Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt Article twenty.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, or you announce. Article twenty-one.
Article twenty-one is the standard article each year for the community preservation fund. In accordance with the statute, the town outlines the town's appropriation for annual spending. For community preservation funds, allocating ten percent for open space, community housing, and then what's left for the budget reserve, it also allocates five percent for the for administrative costs.
Okay, any questions from residents? Seeing none, any from the committee? For motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. You announce. Twenty-two.
Article twenty-two seeks to create a revolving fund for the community market, taking funds away to utilize funds reinvesting in the, in the market. Also allowed to use EBT funds.
What funds?
The, the EBT cards, are they?
Oh, second, yes. All right, any questions from residents? Seeing none, any from the committee? Any motions?
Motion to adopt Article twenty-two.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, or you announce. Article twenty-three.
Article twenty-three is an article we've had on previous town meetings, it just gives a general authorization to the board selectmen to grant easements for our DPW projects. Instead of having to wait for a town meeting, this gives a general approval to grant or accept easement, says DPW projects are undertaken within the year. We bring it back each year, it's only good through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, any questions from residents? Seeing none, any from the committee?
Motion to adopt Article twenty-three.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Chair votes aye. You announce. Twenty-four.
Article twenty-four is a general bylaw amendment to essentially delete the requirement to have a secret ballot for personnel bylaw changes. We don't have this requirement for any other bylaw or any of the collective bargaining agreements. If we wanna make a single change to the personnel bylaw, you have to have a secret ballot, which as in the past, you know, makes everyone at town meeting leave the auditorium, come in and vote, leave the auditorium, and count, just is really as inconvenient as unneeded. If someone wants to have a secret ballot, they can ask the moderator to hold the secret ballot for any article, and personal bylaw should be treated no different than any other article. That's it.
Okay, any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee?
Uh, just the bylaws, is that a two-third vote as well?
Generals.
Jared, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any motions?
Motion to adopt Article twenty-four.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. You announce. Article twenty-five.
Article twenty-five is another general bylaw change by inserting a new bylaw that will allow the town clerk to make small clerical corrections and changes to any general zoning bylaws that we receive comments and feedback from the Attorney General when the Attorney General certifies bylaws. It just allows the town clerk to make those changes without having to formally go back to the town meeting for approval.
Okay, any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee?
It's just, it's just a clerical changes regarding the numbering of letterings to make sure that they're in sequence. We did notice you, even with the new zoning bylaw, that we need to tweak, and it was, and we would have a footnote whenever I made that change to look at that as well.
All right, this is when you get some sort of feedback from the state, or, yeah?
So, for example, we would, um.
I don't know if, uh, I wanna come up to the microphone, like, I don't know if people can hear you. It's for our wide television audience. Oh. There was one up there.
Um, so an example would be, we adopt a zoning article and it has the letter N, but the next letter should be M. And so, I'm not able to change that at this point, it would just be an error in the zoning bylaws until we go back to town meeting and make a
Small correction.
Right.
Okay.
Which is really the renumbering, it was
But you're not gonna like reword something or whatever?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And so then, like I said, it would be in the, if I did have to make a change, it would be listed in the footnote, which would be a permanent part of the document.
Excellent, all right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, uh, look for a motion?
Motion to adopt Article twenty-five.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Chair votes aye. You announce. Twenty-six.
Twenty-six is seeking approval to, to call the selectmen to file a homeroom petition to exempt the town from the hiring process for permanent police officers within civil service. The the civil service process has made it very challenging for the police department to hire individuals on the police department. It's, has taken longer than normal to go through the hiring process, there's not as many qualified candidates as they have been in the past. And other communities are finding it as difficult, if not more difficult, and they're actually trying to get out of civil service. We're not seeking to be removed from civil service, what we're asking for is to exempt the town from the initial hiring process for employees and allow us to have our own hiring process. We will still have a veterans preference, we will still have a residents preference. We will still have some type of testing process and evaluation process, but it will be a process that we develop similar to how we do the assessment centers for promotions. But it will allow us to get a broader field of candidates, because right now, we can only pick from those that take the civil service list. There are many times where we may have a person that wants to transfer from another department, but they're not civil service. They have not taken the civil service test, but they're fully qualified to be a police officer. They've gone through the academy, they're trained, they're individuals that may wanna transfer from a university police force, again, fully trained, have experience, but they're not civil service, and they're not going through the civil service process, so this gives us more flexibility in the hiring process, but again, maintains civil service status for the employees.
Okay. Do we have any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee? For motion?
A motion to adopt Article twenty-six.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, or you announce. Twenty-seven.
The next is asking authorization for the selectmen to accept an easement to Robbie Terrace Way on Poland Avenue from Jim Mandela. The transfer has been part of an agreement that the town has with Mr. Mandela to accept the easement for a piece of property on Foster Lane, Foster Lane that was acquired by the town in, in exchange for a piece of property that the town acquired on Foster Lane in two thousand and eighteen. So essentially, the town would, would, the selectmen would accept an easement, and at the same time relinquish its rights to land on Foster Lane that is not needed. So it being a agreement between the selectmen and the, and developer, the owner of the property.
Okay.
Alex, is that ever right?
It's about as clear as you can.
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, any questions from residents? Uh, any questions from the committee? Any motions?
A motion to adopt Article twenty-seven.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I'll do that again, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, or you announce. Article twenty-eight.
Article twenty-eight is a street acceptance for border road. The selectmen met on this the other night, approved the layout subject to the developer meeting the requirements of the DPW. And I think, Kevin, I'm not sure if they met all of them, but they've
They have not met all of them, yeah, but they're, they're getting close, right?
So, again, the selectmen have approved, it's subject to the developer meeting all the requirements set forth by the DPW.
Okay, do we have any questions from residents? Uh, any questions from the committee? So, would we look for a motion to?
Adopt Article eighteen.
Twenty-eight with the same conditions as a select board, or?
Well, if there are already conditions in place, I don't think we need to replicate that. We could state but it's a replication of a already stated agreement. I have no problem adding it in, into the motion. Is there anybody else here?
For consistency's sake, I think we should add it, but that's just me.
Submit that as part of the motion.
Okay. Uh, so, motion to adopt, uh, with the same, uh, what was it, what was the contingency for?
Richard, could you get a bit of the language?
Subject to meeting all of the conditions set forth by the DPW.
Exactly.
Good.
Second.
And the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. You announce.
And then Article twenty-nine is another street acceptance, this is Grammy's Way, a similar situation where the selectmen approve the layout subject to developer meeting all of the conditions set forth by the DPW, and again, Grammy's Way is that close.
Yep. Any questions from residents? Seeing none, any questions from the committee? For motion?
A motion to adopt Article twenty-nine with the stipulation that all requirements for the DPW have to be met.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. You announce. Article thirty.
It's a citizen's petition, and I don't believe the petitioner is here.
Okay, any questions? Residents? Hi. The mic is actually here.
It's on ironically.
We're on Article thirty?
Is that Article thirty?
Yep, Article thirty.
Which one are you here for? So, all right. No worries. Do we have a motion to take no action on Article thirty?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll actually motion to oppose Article thirty.
All right, we have a motion to oppose Article thirty.
I guess I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in favor of the motion as well. Article.
You already did Article three, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four.
Right.
So now you're on to zoning, and there are two zoning amendments presented that Alex Lotta will present, but before Alex goes, did you wanna take the petition around?
I'll, I'll motion to take the petition around the board.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous, we will take it out of order, which one are we on?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. Welcome. And, uh, do we wanna move the mic up there?
Yeah.
Or have a CTS?
Too many live mics. Good evening, my name is Robert Scaramo, seven sixty-nine Livingston Street, opponent of this article. It is a zoning article. And if I could explain, our changes in the zoning bylaw resulted in some carryover from our previous zoning bylaw. Of course, everything couldn't be eliminated. MFD, which is multi-family dwelling district, usually comprised rather large parcels of land. That was the problem with the carryover of this portion of the old zoning bylaw. It basically applied to four-acre parcels. Unfortunately, there's no four-acre parcels left. The only thing that's left is one-acre parcels on Livingston Street. The three parcels that are part of the effect of this change. So what we have is eight-two-four, which basically applies a fifty-foot setback to four-acre parcels, which is fine. You can do a fifty-foot setback when you have four acres. You can do a 50-foot setback when you have four acres. Unfortunately, 50-foot setbacks don't work in one acre parcels. It leaves a very small box to put an improvement in. So what we want to clarify is that if there's an interpretation necessary by the building commissioner, which is more than likely to happen, we want him to use 5.3.2, which is the less restrictive and allows a change in the setback requirement commensurate with all of the requirements for a development to be improved. Fire would chime in, everybody would chime in to make sure that the parcel that is being improved meets with the requirements and the setbacks would be set accordingly to what's in 5.3.2.
All right, thank you for that explanation. Do we have any questions from residents? Any questions from the committee?
Planning board recommended to adopt.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the committee?
Someone's going to be asking a question, Mr. Chairman.
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. So the setback would change from 50 feet to... How many?
According to the, there is a court and a checklist of what you need to meet the requirements. We would drop that down to 15 or 20 feet depending on the necessity of the development itself. So after all the other departments chimed in and you had a comprehensive scheme to develop this one acre parcel, it would allow the planning board to go to the lowest denominator, which I believe is 15 feet, which would accommodate the box so that you could actually put a development in it. So it'd be 15 feet in the rear, 15 feet in the sides.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Any motions?
Based on the planning board affirmative feedback, I motion to adopt Article 37.
A second.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, unanimous. Back to 35, I believe.
Yep.
All right, good evening, committee members, thank you for having me here this evening. For the record, Alexandra Lauter, Community Economic Development Planner, and I have two warrant articles in front of you this evening for proposed zoning changes. The first that I would like to discuss is what I'm calling a housekeeping article, and it contains three proposed changes meant to clarify and reorganize articles as they were written from previous annual town meeting. So for your benefit, I'll start with amending the zoning bylaw, Section 5.3.4 to include table of requirements and additional provisions for the industrial districts. In previous versions of the zoning bylaw, including the version dated October 2021, which is the most recent before May 22's adoption of the recodification, Section 4230 allowed for the construction of more than one principal structure on a lot with a site plan special permit in any non-residential district. During the recodification accepted at the May 22 annual town meeting, this provision was only incorporated into the business districts under Section 5.3.3, and it was inadvertently left off of Section 5.3.4, which governs industrial districts and includes the industrial I I, industrial II I II, and office research O R. Because the previous zoning bylaw made this provision applicable to all non-residential districts through one section, and it was carried over to the business districts, it was the intention for this provision to remain applicable to all non-residential districts as the side-by-side comparison generated during the zoning bylaw rewrite did not propose any changes or adjustments to that applicability. So it was an error of omission for this provision to be excluded from the industrial districts in the latest adoption of the zoning bylaw, and this amendment corrects that discrepancy. I'm happy to stop here and take any questions on this one before I move on to the next housekeeping item, unless you'd like me to continue.
Why don't you continue and then we'll go questions after.
Absolutely. Next item is clarification to the definition of a major project in the town center. So as it reads right now, it says, quote, "Any development of 25,000 square feet or more." This definition does not clarify what development means, and further, it is not defined in the zoning bylaw in other sections. So it was reasoned that the major project cannot refer to buildings and structures alone because of the following items. The minimum lot area for a major project in the town center is set at 40,000 square feet or just under an acre, but the maximum building coverage for the major project in the town center district is 30%, and that amounts to about 12,000 square feet. So if a project is considered under this provision and met the minimum lot area and were to utilize the maximum allowed building coverage, that would be the 12,000 square feet, which is less than half of what would be considered a major project in the town center district. Therefore, the developed area under the definition should be inclusive of both structures and paved areas. That way, a project of 25,000 square feet of development complies with other dimensional requirements for the district and not requiring double the minimum lot area. This amendment clarifies the definition in a way that is in alignment with the rest of the bylaw and would read that a major project in the town center is inclusive of all structures and paved areas. And housekeeping item number three is adjustments to the size requirements for wall-mounted signs. The, to improve upon the provisions of the previous zoning bylaw related to signage, all sign requirements were rewritten to be under one section. Previously, they were spread across multiple sections and were not uniform. During the rewrite of the signage provisions, the intention was to stagger the allowed size for signage based on how far from the street the buildings were. And this section, as it is written today, limits the overall square footage of the signs based on the linear measurements of the facade. This makes it difficult for businesses to adequately account for the length of the facade while also having signs tall enough to account for the width. The results, this results in a lot of signed special permits where the intent and spirit of the zoning bylaw is well within range. This amendment retains the original intention of adjusting sign size for distance from the street, but better accounts for the length of facade. So basically, you're thinking of, you know, a market basket that's set pretty far back and may likewise have corresponding larger signage, while businesses that are closer to the street, within 100 feet specifically, would have smaller. But depending on the name of the business, how many letters that takes, if they're having to use all of their allotted square footage for the length, it does not then account for the height and it looks disproportionate, or at least not aesthetically pleasing, which is something that the zoning bylaw is striving for, uniformity in that way. And that is all of the housekeeping items, and I'm happy to take questions before we move on to the next article.
All right, do we have any questions from residents? Seeing none, any from the committee?
Just one general question. I'm a rather novice at reading these, so do any of these changes materially change the meaning of any of these sections? Or does it just make it uniform?
So for the dimensional regulations for the industrial district, that's just making it uniform. It's exactly how the text read in the previous bylaw. And again, particularly for industrial developments, when you're having something like a Holton Bugbee or something that is larger in scale like that, they typically have more than one building that serves their principal business. So that really is just correcting an omission. For the town center major project definition, that was something that we had a different interpretation of under the old bylaw. And again, this is really just clarifying that it, based on what the maximum building coverage is for a project in the town center, it can't be structured, so this is just, instead of having to go through that exercise every time, just making sure that that's clarified upfront. And as far as the sign requirements go, it does change what is going to be allowed as far as a calculation is concerned, because right now, the calculation is three quarters, a half, or one and a half times the length of the facade of linear feet is then converted to square feet. And like I said, when you have a longer business name, wider facade, the proportions don't really make sense. So this is really to, and the changes will limit the height to three, four, and five foot signs depending on how far back from the street they are. So materially, yes, they are literally changing, but the intent of scaling the size of the sign based on their distance from the street is still captured and kind of in a way that makes a little more sense.
Fair enough. Do we know if there are any businesses that will be impacted by these changes?
Off the top of my head, no. None yet, and that really would be for developments coming in. You or people who want to replace the signage. That'll probably be more of a discussion as redevelopment continues in the business districts, where, you know, right now, we allow for the direct lens change of an existing sign cabinet to be, even if it's a sign that is no longer allowed by size, you really can't pop up the letters of one business name and pop in new ones. So I think that'll really, it'll affect folks who take over businesses who didn't have a regular box cabinet, but they had the text written out. So I don't have anybody in mind specifically, but it'll come up as more sites are redeveloped.
But generally speaking, no one will be declared non-compliant. You've got to spend money to make changes right away.
No, in fact, I think it'll make signs more compliant because it, the intention to stagger the size based on distance from the street is still going to be captured. But when you get down to the nitty-gritty of that square footage versus the linear footage, I think more will be allowed by right, actually.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question, another novice question. Under Section B, paved areas, does paved mean, what type of material is, does that include a bunch of different materials? Like paved asphalt, impervious stuff?
Yes, impervious surface, so sidewalks, parking lots, walkways, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
And planning board, they voted on this?
Planning board voted to recommend adoption of this article.
Okay. Any other questions, any motions?
A motion to adopt.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, unanimous. Thirty six.
Great, you have me for one more.
Yep.
So this is an article separate from the housekeeping items. And just for clarity, I'll just read the proposed article. It would be to insert a new section, 8.3.10. The planning board may grant by special permit the conversion of a previously permitted commercial unit in a mixed-use development to an affordable residential unit to be maintained in perpetuity. The board shall base its decision upon findings that the conversion will provide for improved practical use of the space and to lessen neighborhood impacts. So if you'll allow me, the commercial overlay districts were implemented to kickstart development along 38 following the Great Recession in 2008. The intention was to create and encourage mixed uses for both commercial and residential developments to better integrate retail and dwelling uses. By the time some of these projects were permitted and constructed between 2015 and 2020, some of which still have ongoing construction, the economic trends, especially as they relate to commercial office space, changed significantly with the pandemic. Many of the constructed office and retail spaces, which cannot accommodate uses such as food establishments, have been left vacant some for years. This provision would be applicable to a finite number of projects, only those which were permitted with both residential and commercial units as a result of these former overlay districts. It would be applicable to approximately eight developments with 10 commercial units, most of which are 2,000 square feet or less. From there, applicants would have to apply for a special permit for this conversion, giving the planning board ultimate discretion for these conversions to occur, taking into account the unique characteristics of the site. This change would be a small way to address the severe housing crisis in the region, particularly those who are looking to rent in Tewksbury, which has a waiting list of over 500 families. And with the construction of more affordable units, without the construction of more affordable units, excuse me, and the average turnover of one to two units per year, many of these people are expected to wait over 30 years to be placed in Tewksbury. These units would be rented at 80% area median income, AMI, which at the present time is a minimum required annual income of at least $80,000. These would be local action units to count on the town's subsidized housing inventory, the SHI. And it also could tip the scales in some of these rental developments, where if they reach that 2575 split, the entire development could be considered affordable and count on the SHI. This amendment would promote occupation of empty units along 38. Residential uses are less intrusive than commercial related to parking and traffic. Additionally, it would be in the intent and spirit of the current zoning bylaw, which does allow for multi-family developments without the requirement of a commercial unit. And I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, any questions from residents? Seeing none, any from the committee?
Just one, these that are in scope of this particular article, those units are mostly around main streets like Route 38.
Almost all of them, except for one at the intersection of Andover and North Street, that one mixed-use development at the corner.
Right.
The rest of them are on Main Street, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's all for the...
Any other questions?
I have one question. Would the developer be, or was it your intent to, was the intent of the article to... Trying to think of the square footage of one of those commercial units now. Would you be making it, or would it be possible to use two of the units and make them one? So you might get a two-bedroom out of it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I hear what you're saying. So I guess in drafting this art, this article for consideration, my intent was to do a one-for-one split. But because this does ultimately come under the planning board's special permit process, that certainly could be something that they propose. I guess currently there isn't anything stopping me from doing so.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Can I ask you, did you say the minimum income was 80?
Any other questions? For motion?
I'll motion to adopt Article 36.
On second.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does this get us to the end of the annual? It's the annual, all right. Moving right along.
Really special.
Article one, special town meeting.
Okay, so special town meeting articles. Article one is standard article of May town meeting to adjust current year budgets that we're projecting protect shortfalls. Just quickly, the board of selectmen, legal services, this is specifically for labor council, just the cost to share have run higher than normal. Just out of precaution, putting additional funds in to get to the end of the year. Human resources, professional services, $20,000 is needed to fund. We had more background checks and pre-employment physicals this year than normal because of the amount of hires that we had. Town managers, professional services, just the increased cost of, you know, control services that were regionalized with the town landlord. Town hall energy, utilities, just higher usage than projected. Just more projected for needing funds to the end of the year, $30,000. Police salaries overtime, $285,000 to cover shifts for the department for the remainder of the fiscal year. This one this year. We ran well over the overtime budget based on, because of the amount of staffing shortages that we had throughout the year, whether it's just vacancies in general due to retirements or injuries or time off that people have taken. The amount of overtime has increased over what the budget has been for the department. Police department and all other, $6,000 is needed for the firearm purchases that we recently made. We bought new, the department bought new handguns for each of the offices. And the cost came at $6,000 higher than we originally had in the budget. Fire salaries, simply buyback, this is a retirement incentive for one of the, for an individual who notified us of his retirement this year. Fire salaries overtime, $75,000 to cover shifts for running the second ambulance this year. Fire operating utilities, $55,000. This is for the remainder of the fiscal year for the new summer fire station. When we started this fiscal year, we knew we probably didn't project enough for the fire department's utilities. So $55,000 is needed for the remainder of this year. probably didn't project enough for the fire department's utilities. So fifty five thousand is needed for the remainder of this year. Fire apparatus, we pay at twenty thousand dollars is needed for vehicle repairs in the department to maintain the engines that we talked about earlier that have getting close to be a useful life. Fire alarm maintenance, six thousand dollars is needed for upgrades and repairs to the fire alarm system. Fire communications, thirty seven thousand five hundred is needed for new batteries and find new portable radios for the department. As you remember, we talked during the budget process of starting process where we start replacing portable radios in the apartment. And this is the start of that replacement program. We're looking to transfer a four thousand one hundred twenty dollars to the new U T V vehicle for police and fire. The four thousand one hundred twenty dollars will be used to purchase a stretcher for the vehicle. Originally appropriated funds for the vehicle, we thought we had enough money to purchase the vehicle and the stretcher, but the cost of the vehicle came in higher than originally projected. Council on Aging Utilities for the senior center, five thousand dollars is needed for the end of the fiscal year. C O A repairs and maintenance, there were more emergency repairs made to building this year than anticipated. So twelve thousand dollars is needed for the remainder of the fiscal year. Facilities grounds repairs and maintenance, thirty thousand dollars is being requested in this transfer for remainder of the fiscal year in case um any unforeseen repairs and maintenance needs come up between now and the end of the year. I just want to make sure we have enough funding for that. And then Medicare tax, seventy five thousand dollars. When we project funding for this uh line item at the beginning of the fiscal year, we base it on total payroll and overtime. Whether we have in all the departments, what we can't project is how many uh details the police department will do or other uh unique payroll issues that will come up. So seventy five thousand dollars is needed for the remainder of the fiscal year based on higher than projected costs for the tax, but also overtime details that we didn't project. The way we're going to fund the seven hundred, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred eight thousand eight hundred twenty dollars that is needed for these budgets will be from two line items. Police salaries has two hundred thousand dollars projected to be in surplus because of the vacancies I mentioned earlier due to retirements. And vacancies that weren't filled throughout the year. And we have five hundred eight thousand eight hundred twenty dollars in principal maturity debt. That funding is available because we don't intend to borrow funds this fiscal year for the new D P W facility. We plan on doing that in August of fiscal twenty twenty four.
Okay, do we have any questions from residents? Seeing none, do we have questions from the committee?
Motion to adopt article one, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, you announce.
Before we leave this article, my police overtime will most likely need transfers that the finance committee can approve now before the end of the fiscal year. This is chunked. Article two, transfer six hundred thousand dollars from free cash to fund snow and ice deficit for F Y twenty three. Transferring sixty thousand dollars into salaries and five hundred forty thousand dollars into operating. Um, this is the amount of free cash that we set aside each year for potential snow and ice deficits. Um, the snow and ice deficit is somewhere in the uh somewhere around four hundred fifty thousand dollars, might be a little higher. Um, but we're asking to transfer all six hundred thousand dollars into snow and ice accounts in case anything any lingering bills or costs that we have to towards the end of the fiscal year. Most likely before the end of the fiscal year, we'll replenish the salt shed and any other needed um end of the year things that have to do with snow and ice.
Okay. Any questions from residents on article two? Seeing none, any questions from the committee? For motion?
Motion to adopt article two.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, you announce. Article three.
Article three is a transfer of one million two hundred twenty five thousand dollars from water retained earnings uh for the following projects. Uh, the first is for water treatment plant upgrades, repair to the filter beds. The D P W is requesting funds for filter beds three and four at the water treatment plant. Several of the filter filtration tiles have cracked, which prevent proper containment of sand in filter beds. So we had to take two of them offline at the moment, so we want to repair those so we can get those online and then schedule the other two for repairs. Um, the reason why we're seeking this funding at town meeting is because we need to get the work done this year and not wait any longer. It's it's immediate repair and necessity for us. The other item is Astel Street water tank maintenance. Uh, right, currently we have an ongoing project that um will upgraded the Astel Street uh street water tank, perform maintenance at the tank. One of those um major improvements is to um repair the catwalk around the tank where we have currently have wireless antennas on the catwalk and has compromised the catwalk. And we're moving those antennas to the top of the tank and on the center of the tank. Actually, the carriers are going to pay for that, but a part of the maintenance is to repair the catwalk and do other maintenance and improvements to the tank. We originally transferred one point eight million dollars retained earnings to fund the project. And we were going to borrow another one point eight million dollars for the project. But since we received favorable bids, we don't need the entire one point eight million dollars to be borrowed. I decided that instead of borrowing the funds, we'll transfer six hundred twenty five thousand dollars from retained earnings. Which is what we need to supplement the other one point eight we have retained earnings. Which will avoid borrowing funds and paying interest on the borrowings. The six twenty five will supplement the other appropriation to complete the project.
Okay, uh, any questions from residents on article three? Seeing none, any from the committee? For motion?
Motion to adopt article three.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, you announce. Article four.
So article four, five and six, I'm gonna talk together because it's somewhat confusing. Not that anything else I talked about wasn't confusing tonight, but so we um took part in the class action suit for opioids. And the town was going to receive an allotment of money each fiscal, each fiscal year. The first few years being the higher amounts and decrease over time. I think it's fifteen years we'll receive funding. This year, the allotment was a hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars and ninety seven cents. We also expect more because the class action moved from the companies now to the pharmacies that actually prescribe or sold the the uh the opioids, so C V S, Warren, so those type of companies will now probably end up settling, they'll get some money from them. But in the meantime, um, there was no mechanism to spend the money. The state did not come up with a, an easy way for cities and towns to do that. Governor Haley is working on changing some of the statutes to allow it to make it easier, but that has not happened yet. We saw some of the proposed language, but which will be very helpful, but it's going to take some time to pass. So in the meantime, what has been recommended are these three steps. First is to create an opioid settlement stabilization fund, a special stabilization fund. Once that's created, we will transfer the hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars and ninety seven cents into that fund. That amount has been certified as um adjusted free cash for us this fiscal year. The department of revenue, they did that to most cities and towns. So because they adjusted it as um new certified free cash, we'll be able to transfer that into the stabilization fund. Once it's in the stabilization fund, we will then seek approval to transfer it out of the stabilization fund to be spent in accordance with the statute for the expenditures of this fund. And what we intend to spend it on will be in conjunction with the schools, police department and health department to provide outreach and education programs, educational programs and any support services for families. All expenditures will be in accordance for what the uh what the funds can be used for, those are three years of retirement.
Alright, and this is, that's still being defined what it can be used for, is what you said?
No, they pretty much defined it.
Okay.
Which, once we get it, then we, once we know what the town meeting approved it, then those three departments will start focusing on the best way to spend it. We'll also um utilize the funds in recommendations in conjunction with our frontline initiative.
Okay, um any questions from residents on, take questions on article four, five or six and or six? Seeing none, any questions from the committee? For motion, uh, I don't know if we want to do them together or?
Uh, we should probably kick it.
Do them separate?
So motion to adopt article four.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous.
Motion to adopt article five.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're unanimous.
Motion to adopt article six.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Okay, I think that was it. Do we need a motion to close the public hearing or do we?
We usually do, yes.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Alright, public hearing is closed. We just have a little more business in the committee. Thanks for those in attendance. Uh, okay, I don't think Richard has anything for us. Uh, no time sheets, but we do have some meeting minutes. Um, hopefully y'all got a chance to look at them.
Yes.
In the Wayback Machine, they dug up some notes. Yeah, um, and my plan is to uh hopefully before, I'm going to go do the same thing on all the other old ones. I'm just going to figure it out before uh town meeting and maybe at town meetings, pre-meetings, we, you know, we can uh
Knock a few out.
Knock a few out and get caught up because being so out of date does not feel good. Okay, so um, I guess I'll look for a motion on uh meeting minutes from October twenty five, two thousand twenty one, March seventh, two thousand twenty two, June fifteen, two thousand twenty two and March twenty, two thousand twenty three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Alright, those are approved. Do we have anything else? Alright, so uh we do, we get a
Yeah.
Uh, do we have a couple weeks? I don't know.
I think we have a couple weeks.
Yeah.
Oh, is it just that?
Next week, next month, twenty fourth.
Huh?
Next week, twenty fourth and then it's
No, 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 no. Today's the tat. So we get the seventeenth, twenty fourth.
Well, with the twenty fourth, no, we have.
And the thirty, what month is this?
We're meeting on the twenty fourth.
I think that was just a uh in case needed.
It's needed, it's needed.
Okay, so we're not, you're saying now we're not going to need it?
We're not going to need it.
Right.
I don't think.
But we've already voted on a warrant on it.
Believe me.
Yeah, I mean, if something came up, we could have a meeting when we need be, but um, we're probably good and
I can vote you out.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we have any transfers for the pre-meetings, I'll I'll put, we'll have a meeting before the town meeting.
We're meeting on the first at seven and the town meeting's at seven thirty.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then the, I think it's seven o'clock on Wednesday, we meet in the
Well, it's six thirty.
Uh, six thirty, sorry, it's the half hour.
Are we still going to meet in the library or we're going to meet in the home?
In the gym, yeah. Um, alright, so I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, we're adjourned.